To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, public meeting, Tuesday, May 16, 2023. The time is now 7:01. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, notice that this meeting was published in December 8, 2022, issue of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall bulletin board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's office. Commissioner Kelly?
Present.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci is absent, excused. Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present, except for Commissioner Tucci, he's absent, excused this evening.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Yes, thank you. We have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for April 18, 2023. I need a motion?
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
We also have executive session minutes for March 21, 2023, and May 2, 2023.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's it for minutes.
Communications, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We have three this evening. The Nutley High School Volleyball Booster Club has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold a raffle on Sunday, June 4, 2022, from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM at 44 Park Avenue. The In-Time Food Service LLC has submitted an application for a catering permit in order to serve alcohol at the networking event on Thursday, June 22, 2023, from 4:30 PM to 7:30 PM at Asai Inc., which is 200 Metro Boulevard in Nutley. And St. Mary's Church has submitted an application for a social affair permit for their St. Anthony's feast to be held on Friday, June 16, 2023, from 6:30 PM to 10:00 PM at 17 Mon's Senior Owens. I need a motion?
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a proclamation tonight declaring the first Friday in June be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares that the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the Township of Nutley to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and declare that we as a country must do more to end this public health crisis. Whereas every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence and more than 200 are shot and wounded with an average of more than 17,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries, and whereas New Jersey has 439 gun deaths every year with a rate of three deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $5.3 billion each year, of which 168.9 billion is paid by taxpayers. New Jersey has the 32nd highest rate of gun violence in the U.S. And whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas cities across the nations, including the Township of Nutley, are working to end senseless violence with evidence-based solutions, and whereas protecting public safety and the communities they serve is the government's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas the government and law enforcement office in partnership with local violence intervention activities and resources know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity, and how to address it in our best position to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in township gun violence. And whereas in January 2013, Hidayah Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and on June 2, 2023, to recognize the 26th birthday of Hidayah Pendleton, born June 2, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Days and wear orange in tribute to Hidayah Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hidayah's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of the human life. Whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2, the first Friday in June in 2023, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 2, 2023, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them and encourage responsible gun ownership to keep our families and communities safe. Now therefore will be resolved that the Township of Nutley declares the first Friday in June, June 2, 2023, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support the local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor that and value human lives. Thank you very much for presenting this to us. We proudly, you know, support this day. And it's like I said last year, no matter where you stand on the Second Amendment, keeping people safe, keeping people, keeping guns from harming people is certainly things that we could support as a government. He's the... Sure.
I'm Peg Zickelkerman. I'm a resident of Nutley and a volunteer for Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America. I'm happy to be here with my fellow volunteer, Elisa Silvestri, to thank Mayor Scarpelli and all the commissioners on behalf of the Essex County Chapter of Moms Demand Action for issuing this proclamation. We wear orange with heavy hearts and feelings of frustration and horror again this year because of the continued gun violence in our country. However, we also wear orange with renewed determination to demand a future free from gun violence and to elevate the voices of those demanding an end to gun violence. As incidences of gun violence have grown, so too has the movement to stop it. We continue to educate, raise awareness, organize, advocate, and rally for safer communities. We will not stop until the gun violence stops. I would like to share briefly a few more statistics about the toll of gun violence here in the U.S. There have been 225 mass shootings so far this year, and it's only May. Guns are the leading cause of death for American children, not car accidents or childhood diseases, but bullets from guns. Every month, an average of 70 women are shot and killed by an intimate partner. 59% of all gun deaths in the U.S. are suicides. And children between the ages of 10 and 15 have the fastest-growing firearm suicide rate of any age group, 42% over the last decade. More than 700 children die by gun suicide each year. 350 children every year access a loaded gun and shoot themselves or someone else, most often another child. As of this April 28, 100 children under the age of 17 accessed a loaded gun, resulting in 43 deaths and 59 injuries. And we know that secure storage of firearms can reduce suicide and unintentional deaths. And finally, as of today, there have been 55 instances of gunfire on school grounds resulting in 21 deaths and 38 injuries. This is the reality today in the U.S. We know there is no single answer to preventing gun violence. It is a multifaceted issue. But by partnering together, we can build a future free from all types of gun violence, gun suicides, gun homicides, unintentional shootings, and intimate partner shootings. So I want to thank you again for issuing the proclamation and for lighting Town Hall orange the weekend of June 2 for gun violence awareness. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask you, the statistics that you raised in your commentary, did you make sure the clerk gets a copy of that?
Absolutely. I could actually just leave you my remarks, okay?
Thank you. No, they're very, they're very...
Say something.
They're very real. It's, it's been me that, in this day and age, that when you think about the crisis and the nature of all these events, that bright people, regardless of your background, can't come together and agree on what's going to make, what's going to make our lives safer.
You couldn't agree with me.
So it's...
Honestly, you say, we don't have to come on too far, but the numbers speak.
Yes.
You kind of can't imagine.
You can't ignore them. You just can't ignore them.
Yeah. And actually, we had numbers, and a friend of mine is actually accepting a proclamation, not clear. She asked if they had changed, and I said, I didn't have any updates. She looked, since they were put together like a week or so ago, there were five updates. I mean, it changes every...
When you're, when you're reading, I just checked my phone because every day there's been something. So...
For every other day.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much for your attention.
Bishop Petrakko? I just like to add something, too. I do wear orange when I go hunting, and I have never, ever seen anybody shoot a deer or pheasant or whatever they're hunting for with all these kinds of rapid-fire guns that are out there. And, you know, it's the old story, I guess, with the NRA. They think it's the foot in the door. That's going to change all the, you know, gun rules in America, and I disagree with them. I think that it is time, especially with these school shootings. Another thing I just wanted to mention, too, a lot of my friends, a lot of Nutley residents, how can you help me with my, getting my handgun permit because they're changing the laws, supposedly, all that stuff. And they'll say, well, do you have yours? And I don't have one, and nor do I want one because this, like you said in your speech, the responsibility about having a handgun and securing it and putting it away or walking through a mall with it, all that stuff. And God forbid if a kid gets their hands on it and you're, and I listen to what you said, it's unbelievable how many accidental deaths there are that kids buy in their parents' gun or their brothers or whoever, family member, stored in a closet, and they're curious at a young age. So, you know, you guys are doing really, really great work, and I don't want to see all the gun rules change in America because, you know, I think that it is our right. However, I think that there needs to be many changes to it because, you know, even, you know, what, what's going around America now, defund the police department. You know, what chance does a cop have walking into a school when somebody has an automatic weapon in their hand and they have, you know, a, you know, a six shooter, you know, or whatever they carry today? So...
I know that military and the police do not want certainly assault weapons on the street.
Exactly.
Because...
So...
They're not safe.
My message to you is keep up the good work, and however I can help, I will be willing to help you. And like I said, I'm a hunter myself, but the rules need to be changed for sure. So thank you for coming.
Thank you so much. We're here. We won't stop. We're not going away.
Bishop Kelly?
I don't want to belabor any points. I think everything was well said in the amendment or the proclamation, your comments, Commissioner Evans' comments, Commissioner Petrakko's comments. I will say that gun violence is an epidemic in this country, and something does need to be done to curb this epidemic. So thank you for bringing it to our attention, and it's much appreciated.
We'll present the proclamation to you. Want to take a picture?
Proclamation? Yeah.
You're welcome. Guys, have a great night.
Alani, do you have a ribbon for morale?
I have... Oh.
Excuse me. Do you have extra ribbons? Looking out for my new buddy. This two shall pass.
You ready, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Let's go to reports. Commissioner Petrakko?
Yes, Mayor, we have our public safety report this month. Thank you.
And I see Commissioner Tucci has a Parks and Public Properties report, so, Shatree Report. Before we do bills, we have a need to go into an executive session to discuss, Mr. Bruno.
Contract negotiations?
Contract negotiations. Have a motion? Move it. Second.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desire, desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley moving to close executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Be further resolved that at the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when, and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending indoor anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The time is now 7:18.
Madam Clark, go back on the record, back in public session. Let's move to bills.
Bill list for May 16, 2023. Uh, bill list determined by department totals, public affairs, eighty seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and eight cents. Revenue and finance, two million, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and thirteen cents. Public safety, sixty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-six cents. Public works, ninety-one thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Parks and public property, seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-one cents. Water utilities, sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-two cents. Payroll as of Friday, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, regular payroll total, eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. Overtime payroll total, fifty-three thousand, fifteen dollars and seventy-three cents. Total payroll, nine hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and eleven cents for a grand total of three million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-six cents. I need a motion.
Move the bills.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
Oh, comment on agenda items only. Would anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners tonight? Seeing no one, uh, move to Board of Commission announcements. Commissioner Kelly?
I don't have anything, Mayor, thank you.
Nothing, Mayor.
I just want to acknowledge two retirements in my office. Uh, Kristin Kosky is retiring, uh, in June, so, uh, she's just been a remarkable asset in our treasury group, and I just want to wish her well. And also, uh, part, he's working part-time in the assessor's office, but Frank Pucino has been working part, part-time for several years. Uh, Frank is, is gonna re, is retiring. He's eighty-two years old now. Uh, but he's had a long, long, long career, uh, as a tax assessor, and also, he was on the, the State Association and committees for many, many years, but he's been invaluable, uh, to the office as well, and he's retiring, so I want to wish him well as, uh, in his retirement.
We all wish them well. Let's move on to public hearings. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, Mayor, we have a public hearing on, uh, ordinance number thirty-five fourteen. This ordinance was introduced a few weeks ago, and it is, um, an ordinance that will prohibit, uh, uh, smoke shops and vape shops, uh, in Nutley. It does not, uh, does not affect the existing shops their grandfather, uh, but any new, uh, shops will be prohibited.
Anybody want to be heard on ordinance number three, five, one, four? Seeing no one?
Move the closed public hearing.
Need a second?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Uh, my next, uh, uh, area is, is the adoption of the municipal budget. Uh, this, uh, the budget will be tabled, uh, for introduction at our first meeting in June.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's move on to resolutions. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. The first one I have on for this evening is, uh, designating May as Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Uh, whereas approximately sixteen point six million Asian-American and Pacific Islanders reside in the United States, making up approximately five point four percent of the United States population, and that by twenty fifty, Asian-American and Pacific Islanders will make up nine point seven percent of the total United States population, over forty million people. Whereas Asian-American and Pacific Islanders represent over thirty countries and ethnic groups that speak over a hundred different languages. Whereas the month of May has been selected to commemorate the arrival of the first known Japanese immigrant to the United States on May seventh, eighteen forty-three, as well as to honor the completion of the transcontinental railroad on May tenth, eighteen sixty-nine, which upwards of twenty thousand Chinese workers helped construct, construct. The month of May pays tribute to the generations of Asian and Pacific Islanders who have enriched the United States' history and are instrumental in its future and success. Whereas the origin of Asian-American Pacific Islanders AAPI Heritage Month can be tracked back to the ninety-fifth Congress, nineteen seventy-seven to seventy-eight, when five joint resolutions were introduced proposing that a week in May be designated, designated to commemorate the accomplishments of Asian-American and Pacific Islanders. Whereas on March twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-nine, President Carter issued Proclamation forty-six fifty, the first presidential proclamation for Asian-Pacific American Heritage Week. In this proclamation, President Carter spoke of the significant role Asian-Pacific Americans have played in the creation of a dynamic, pluralistic American society with the contributions to sciences, arts, industry, government, and commerce. Whereas on May seventh, nineteen ninety, President George H. W. Bush issued Presidential Proclamation sixty-one thirty, designated May nineteen ninety as the first Asian-Pacific American Heritage Month. Whereas Asian-Pacific Islander Heritage Month, formerly known as Asian-Pacific American Heritage Month, until two thousand and nine, originated in nineteen ninety-two, when New York, then-New York Congressman Frank Horton introduced the bill that called for the month of May to receive that, that designation, which came from the idea of former Capitol Hill staffer, Jeannie Jew, in the mid nineteen seventies, more than fifteen years earlier. And whereas the compilation of hate crime data published by the Center for the Study of Hate Crime and Extremism revealed that Asian hate crime increased by three hundred and thirty-nine percent last year compared to the year before, with New York, San Francisco, Los Angeles, and other cities surpassing their record numbers in twenty twenty. And therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, recognize May as Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, advancing leaders through opportunity, and encourage all residents to come together as a community in solidarity against racism and to celebrate the richness of the Asian-American Pacific Islander community, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Uh, whereas the Town of Nutley has applied for a grant in the amount of thirty-five hundred through the City Green Good Food Bucks Program, from which funds will be used to offset the cost of reimbursements to vendors of the Nutley Farmers Market that participated in the Senior Farmer Market Nutrition Voucher Double Coupon Program. This program awards eligible patrons an additional twenty-five dollars in Nutley Farmer Market coupons to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables. in conjunction with the state farmer market nutrition nutrition program vouchers through the County of Essex. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the Township of Nut- Nutley and the County of Essex State of New Jersey formally approves the grant application for the City of Green Good Food Bucks Program for the twenty twenty-three season. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And the last one I have on for this evening, resolution number one twenty-three, tw- twenty-three. Uh, it's uh designating uh the month of June as Alzheimer's Brain Awareness Month. Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States, and whereas one in three seniors dies with Alzheimer's or another dementia, it kills more than breast cancer and prostate cancer combined. Whereas over eleven million Americans provide unpaid care for people with Alzheimer's or other dementias. These caregivers provided an estimated one eighteen billion hours of care values at over three hundred thirty-nine billion dollars. Whereas more than six million Americans of all ages have Alzheimer's, and whereas one in ten people age forty-five and older are experiencing subjective cognitive decline. And whereas the subject of cognitive decline is self-reported memory problems that have been getting worse over the past year. And therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners in Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey recognize the month of June as Alzheimer's and brain awareness month, and call upon citizens of Nutley to learn more about Alzheimer's disease and support individuals living with the disease and their caregivers. Be it further resolved that Township of Nutley recognizes June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, the longest day, the day with the most light summer solstice. On June twenty-first, thousands of participants from across the world come together to fight the darkness of Alzheimer's through activity of their choice. We encourage all residents to raise funds and awareness for the care, support, and research efforts of the Alzheimer's Association. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, Mayor, whereas the Township of Nutley Department of Revenue and Finance has a need to acquire an electronic tax sale contractor on behalf of the township. Whereas Rock Industries, uh, three oh six Harland Road in Belme, New Jersey, is the only certified electronic sales contractor in the state of New Jersey. Whereas uh Rock Industries has submitted a proposal stating that they will provide such services at the same rate as twenty twenty-two. Actually, they've been providing the same rate since inception, a fifteen dollars per line item not to exceed forty-five hundred dollars. Whereas funds are available from account three oh one, two oh six, two oh nine, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer upon adoption of twenty-three budget. These funds are provided for in the proposed uh twenty twenty-three budget. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey as follows. Mayor and Township Clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute an agreement with Rock Industries, three oh six Harling- Arlington Road in Belme, New Jersey, uh, zero eight five oh two for electronic tax sale services at a rate of fifteen dollars per line item not to exceed forty-five hundred dollars in accordance with its proposal dated May twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Copy of this resolution, as well as the contract, shall be placed on file with the Township Clerk. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracca?
Always dish upon one revenue by payables for training for parts of one revenue. Definitely in terms of additions concerning an outside personal or private standing, if authorized. As such, these procedures are very important for not members of the North Fire Department. Will that resolution?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you. Whereas there are seven hundred and five motor vehicle fatalities in New Jersey in two thousand twenty-two, and whereas a larger percentage of the motor vehicle occupants killed in traffic crashes were not wearing a seatbelt. And whereas the use of a seatbelt remains the most effective way to avoid death or serious injury in the motor vehicle crash. Whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration estimates that one hundred and thirty-five thousand lives were saved by wearing seatbelts uses nationally between nineteen seventy-five and two thousand. And where the state of New Jersey will participate in the nationwide Click It or Ticket Seatbelt Mobilization from May twenty-second to June fourth, two thousand twenty-three, in an effort to raise awareness and increase seatbelt usage through to co- through a combination of high visibility enforcement and public education. And whereas the Division of Highway Traffic Safety has set a goal of increasing the seatbelt usage rate in the state from current levels of ninety-four percent to ninety-five point five percent. Whereas further increase in seatbelt usage in New Jersey will save lives in our roadways. Now therefore be resolved that Township of Nutley declares its support for Click It or Ticket Seatbelt Mobilization, both locally and nationally, from May twenty-second to June fourth, two thousand twenty-three, and pledges to increase awareness of mobilization and the benefits of seatbelt use. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse established the Municipal Alliance for Prevention of Alcoholism and Drug Abuse in nineteen eighty-nine, educate, engage residents, local government, law enforcement, official schools, non-pro- nonprofit organization, the faith communities, parents, youth, and other allies in efforts to prevent alcoholism and drug abuse in communities throughout New Jersey. In coordination with this G C A D A A, the New Jersey Department of Human Services Division on Mental Health and Addiction Services, has awarded a youth leadership grant to the G C A D A Municipal Alliance Program. Whereas the Board of Commissioners in Township of Nutley County of State, New Jersey recognizes that the abuse of alcohol and drugs is a serious problem in our society amongst persons of all ages, and therefore has an establishment of lines committee. Whereas the Board of Commissioners further recognized that it is incumbent upon not only public officials, but upon the entire community to take action to prevent such abuse in our community. And whereas the Board of Commissioners has applied for D M H A S Youth Leadership Funding through the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse through the County of Essex. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners in Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey hereby recognizes the following. The Board of Commissioner does hereby authorize submission of an applica- application for D M H S grant, funding for Nutley Municipal Alliance for Year One Grant Term nine one twenty-three to nine thirty two thousand twenty-five in the amount of six thousand, seven hundred thirty-six dollars and sixty cents. The Board of Commissioner acknowledges the terms and conditions of administering the Municipal Alliance Grant, including administrative com- compliance and audit requirements. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, the first resolution I'll read is Commissioner Tucci's. Whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property Township of Nutley has a need to maintain a geese-free environment for the township parks. And whereas Preferred Outdoor Experience, P L Box two eighty-two, Great Meadow, New Jersey, a specialized service that has been effective in the past, will provide the service for an annual maintenance contract in the amount of twenty-three thousand, eight hundred sixty-eight dollars, building twelve installments of nineteen hundred eighty-nine dollars, which is below the township bid threshold, but above the New Jersey State mandated pay-to-play threshold. Whereas the service period is from April first, twenty twenty-three, through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Whereas Preferred Outdoor Experience has completed and submitted a business identity disclosure certification with certificates that then have not made any reportable disqualifying contributions to a political or candidate committee in its township of Nutley in the previous one year that will violate N J S A nineteen forty-four A twenty point five or the Township Local Unit Pay-to-Play Ordinance uh or New Jersey ELEC disclosure requirements, and that the contract will bar the owner of Preferred Outdoor Experience from making any reportable contributions to the term of the contract. Whereas funds are available from account number three oh two, five oh four, two oh five, and have been certified with the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley be authorized to enter into a fifty-two week maintenance contract with Preferred Outdoor Experience. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca? Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. And the next three are my resolutions, whereas raffle applications received from the following organizations. Saint Mary's Roman Catholic Church, license number forty twenty-three, on premises, fifty fifty cash raffle. License number forty-one twenty-three, on premises, merchandise raffle, both to be held Friday, June sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Whereas applications were reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved. The municipal clerk is authorized to issue said license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Township Clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for seal bids for twenty twenty-three Walnut Street roadway improvement project, Park Avenue to Grand Avenue in the Township of Nutley to be received by the Board of Commissioners in the Commission Chambers Township four oh one Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Wednesday, June seventh, twenty twenty-three, at eleven A M prevailing time, at which time they will be open and ready to move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas bids for the twenty twenty-three C D B G Ravine Ravine Avenue Roadway Improvement Project were received and open on Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas S F L I and Sun Contracting for Coppola Street, Nutley, New Jersey, was the lowest responsible bidder. Whereas the base bid for twenty twenty-three Ravine Avenue Roadway Improv- Improvement Project is in the amount of three hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars, for a total bid of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. And whereas the award of this contract is subject to the availability and appropriation of sufficient funds from the Essex County Community Development Block Grant Account, number T nineteen nine oh nine nine oh one, an amount of one hundred eighty thousand, eight hundred twenty-five thousand, and budget account number G O four one sixty-two four oh one, an amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-six dollars. And subject to this caveat, have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to S F L I and Sun Contracting for the total bid in the amount of not to exceed three hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars, and that the mayor and township clerk are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract for the Township of Nutley. So it's the final approval and funding by the Essex County Community Development Block Grant. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Ah. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Would anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none, uh, we have a need for another executive uh session? Contract negotiation.
Move it.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Whereas Section Eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the, of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley move into closed executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Be it further resolved that the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when, and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending and or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci? Uh, I'm sorry, uh, Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And?
There'll be no other uh, this is conducting even out of multiple in turn.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca? Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The time is eight oh three.
Good night, everybody.